...for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any of the commissioners would like to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Herrick to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item two, animal control pet over week.
Officer Couch, animal welfare. This here is Princess. He's an adult male pit bull mint. Seemed to be really friendly. We've had him twelve days. He's ready for adoption. It would cost someone forty dollars if he lived here in town to adopt him. They live outside of our city limits. It would cost them thirty dollars. Again, he seems to be really sweet. Seems to have some manners.
Could you back up so they can get a picture of him on camera? They're gonna wanna adopt you if you don't show.
I'm not up for adoption.
Thank you.
You guys have dinner.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item three, citizens' participation. If you'd like to address the commission, approach the podium. Tell us who you are and sign in. You have a three-minute limit to speak your piece.
Right. Mr. Mayor, City Council.
I just killed the mic. Sorry. That might not be too bad, though. I can actually talk over this. I really don't need it.
Are we back on?
Two minutes is up.
My three minutes are up. Okay. So my name is Craig McIntyre. I'm here to give you a report of an event that took place this weekend. My wife and I own Spoklahoma Bike Shop downtown. And we put on the Fourth Annual Oklahoma Gravel Growler, which was the second year it's run from downtown Shawnee out into the rural areas and then back into town again. This year, we had 255 registered riders, fourteen registered ultra marathoners. So to put that in perspective, riders either did eighty-three miles out into the rural area of the town or thirty-five. And the runners ran the same course as the short riders, so thirty-five miles. We had people who registered from Canada, from fourteen different states. We had in excess of forty hotel and RV night stays that was generated. We are using the proceeds of this to donate money to Hope House, Community Renewal, and then giving some to, I know it doesn't apply to this city, but to the Arlington Fire Department, the volunteer fire department. They provided us their firehouse as the midway stopping point. We engaged a huge number of the population of the town. All of the businesses located near Main and Bell, or the majority of them, made donations for giveaways for kids, for the community. They involved themselves in it. We had restaurants that were open for the riders, their families, other people who came down. We had six professional racers came from across the country to race in this event. And as I told everybody before this started, if I get to Saturday night and nobody got injured and there were no incidents, it would be a great day. We had great weather. Everybody had a good time. And I've heard from at least fifty people saying they're coming back next year. So we wanted to thank the city because you provided the permits. You worked with us. The police department was super helpful. The volunteer, I don't know what they're called, but the ladies in red, the jackets and that, they were there all day long, controlling traffic at Main and Bell, working with the people. They were super friendly. So most of the people I talked to, including our ambassador rider from California, as she was walking around with me, said, you know, this is just an amazing community you have here and you're so lucky that the town itself is supporting you as well. Because most towns, they say, nah, that's a pain. We gotta shut down the street for a half hour or we gotta do that. And so it was a great success and we want to thank you all and to let you know that we're gonna do it next year and our goal, instead of 250, is gonna be 500. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen and commissioners and mayor. Thank you for letting me come. My name is Barbara Loudermilk and I am the Executive Director of Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, located on Bell, down from his shop. I'm here to report on January twenty-fourth was the annual PIT count. PIT stands for Point and Time Count for counting homeless individuals throughout the United States, Oklahoma, and each county and city. A group of nonprofits and community service agencies went out and did a count. And I must give credit, one of the ways that we could do this informal count was to kind of entice them with goodie bags and free lunches. And I don't know whether I'm sad to admit, but we counted on January twenty-fourth in the city of Shawnee ninety-four homeless. That same day, in Oklahoma County, the city of Oklahoma City did the exact same count and they counted 1,200. That was reported on Channel Four and Channel Five the next day of the Oklahoma City PIT count. During that announcement on those two TV stations, they reported that that was a 20 percent count. They forecasted it to be five times that number. So if you take ninety-four and multiply it by twenty, you know, five, you're gonna get about 470 in the city of Shawnee and Potawatomi County. So sad as I am here to report, that's the count that we see and it's something that we're going to be addressing. I want to commend Ed Bolt. He, since he's been elected, has made a commitment to work with all the nonprofits and community service agencies in this city to start doing town meetings and to find needs in the ways that we could address this homeless. Many of us have funding for it, but we never have enough funding. And so I'm here to report that. And if there's any questions, I just wanna say thank you for letting me have this time.
Do you know what their reasoning for using the 20 percent number is?
No, they did not report that on Channel Four and Five. I could call the Homeless Alliance and find out, Mayor, and let you know why they forecasted that to be five times that number.
If it's convenient, that would be helpful.
I sure will. You know I'll call you. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, well. Nice pen, by the way. Leave it there. Oh. Noted. I'll take mine back.
We usually put it on a chain.
It's not on a, yeah, okay. I, just real quick sideline, got to participate in the gravel race that Mr. McIntyre was talking about on Saturday. I rode the thirty... I went thirty-seven miles. I don't know. My speedometer must be wrong. But it was amazing to see so many people downtown and the atmosphere was energetic and we had music and there were... It was very celebratory and exciting and really good feedback from outsiders of our community saying how great Shawnee is. I totally agree. So with that, this Saturday is the annual youth speak-out event, which is a, it's a panel discussion held by the Shawnee Youth Coalition. This is grades seven through twelve. And they're going to discuss issues faced by them and while they are offered, here's the problem. They also have to bring a solution. Okay? So they get up and they read their speech in front of a panel of listeners. And Commissioner Gillum has very kindly committed to that event. It starts, registration is eight-thirty to nine o'clock this Friday at the Performing Arts Center at the Shawnee High School. The event goes from nine until twelve. I just brought my sheet because I didn't want to get anything incorrect. This is a cross-section of youth from area schools that prepared, that have written speeches, basically. Again, here's the problem as we see it. Here's a solution. And then what's really great is after the listening panel gets to hear all of these speeches, then it's an opportunity for the students and the listening panel to have further discussion. Because there might be something that you hear in that speech where you thought, well, golly, that's an easy fix. For example, one of the youth, a couple of years ago, mentioned, you know, did you know that the bathroom doors at our school swing out instead of swinging in? That's dangerous. That was an easy fix. And that got taken care of very, very quickly. Some of the speeches are a little bit of a tougher solve. But we're always looking for adults who are willing to listen to our youth and help them feel empowered where they are. And I think it's a good thing. So everyone is invited this Friday at the Performing Arts Center at the Shawnee High School, nine o'clock to 12 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Okay, Holly.
Hello, commissioners. Rachel Milo, whistle owner and community program director for the Blue Zones Project. Two things. First of all, I'd like to say that from the Blue Zones hat, we are very excited to see the direction that you go with the Parks and Rec Committee that we find in a lot of active communities, that that's a very active committee that helps make the parks and our recreation an important viable topic of conversation on a regular basis. So we're excited to see what you do with that. The second thing I'd like to say is that we have been visiting with bike-share companies around the country and we have a large constituency of people who are really interested in a bike-share project for our community, not only within the well-being district that's really working on that, but in addition to that, we've actually had students lead the charge in raising a little over $20,000 already towards the bike-share project. So as that plan develops, we will be bringing the idea to the city. And I would just like to open the door to anyone who has interest in that. Pros, cons, liabilities, any of the questions. We have a Built Environment Committee that meets on the first Wednesday of the month, which is this coming Wednesday, in these chambers at four o'clock. And that you are welcome to come and hear the topic of that conversation, as well as you're welcome to come to our office anytime to ask questions. But it is something that is a groundswell interest. It is coming from people that participate in races, as well as people who want to ride their bike to work, to people who have to ride their bike to work. And so they're looking for safe avenues to do that and also low-cost ways to do that. So just wanted to let you know that that was on the forefront and it's coming down the pike and that significant funding has already been committed to helping us carry that out. Thank you.
Will the rollout be in the... in a certain district? Are y'all gonna do the rollout out?
Yes. So the initial plans... Yes. So the initial vision of the project is to roll it out west of Kickapoo from Thirty-Ninth Street south to Farrell. And when we say roll it out, that's where the bike stations would initially be set up so that they can check bikes in and out. And the reason that was done is because we see a substantial need from our citizens in lower west side of our city riding their bike to places of employment and to the grocery and to school and to the hospital. And so by helping that constituency first, it really does help the people who need it the most versus those who may just want it. So by starting at Farrell, we're providing some form of transportation. And this program, the way that it is envisioned now would be a free program. So that would be a free form of transportation from the lower west side of the city as far as Thirty-Ninth, as far as stations, and then work our way north from there. But we have people who are riding their bike to work in those areas. And then we also have a lot of physicians and support staff at the hospital that ride their bike. And then, as I mentioned, the OBU student body has actually initiated this first drive for their campus. Because some statistics say that at least 30 percent of their students don't have cars. And so we, as a community, are not getting them into our city because they don't have vehicles. So they're living on campus and never leaving campus. This is a way for them to get to the homelands and the grocery stores and to retail or whatever that may be and be off-campus free. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hello. My name's Tom Claybrook. I live at 1501 North Union here in town. I came before you three months ago and asked a simple question about the city's finances. Why did the budget say there was $4.3 million in the general fund and the books said $600,000? The mayor said we deserved an answer to that question and we'd get it in the near future. Three months is long enough for your constituents to wait, so I will tell them how their treasury was depleted. All of my numbers come from the reading of city budgets and audits, which are available online and from the finance department. The 2015 audit showed an unassigned general fund balance of $5.7 million. The 2016 audit showed $4.7 million. And the 2017 audit showed $2.3 million. The audit for 2018 is one month overdue. However, the finance department provided me with an October the 29th, 2018 balance of $611,000. So over a three-year period, the general fund balance was virtually depleted, going from $5.7 million to $611,000. The budgets during this period of time showed that the balance stayed above $4 million. Much worse than this deception is the fact that $7 million was illegally taken from the street fund and used to shore up several other funds. $3.7 was given to the capital fund, $1.4 to the SMA, $1.1 to the general fund, $510,000 to the airport, and $178,000 to the street and alley fund. All these numbers come from the 2017 audit, page 51. I say illegally diverted because when the third cent sales tax was approved by voters, it was legally restricted with 43.75 percent dedicated to street improvements. As of December 31st, 2018, the street fund had $382,000. The budget that went into effect on July 1, 2018, stated it had $6.3 million balance with a plan to spend $8.8 million in major improvements this year. These budgets are full of fictitious numbers designed to hide improper spending. So in essence, what happened is most of the major funds were overspent and the street fund was used as a slush fund to keep them from going insolvent. Then most of that money was spent. With all these irregularities and obvious misappropriations, I respectfully suggest that in order for you to fulfill your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Shawnee, you have a forensic audit performed to find out exactly where all this money went and to ensure that none went out the back door.
Mr. Claybrook, I appreciate that you mentioned that. I and the city treasurer spent an hour and a half with you.
Yeah. And confirmed most of what I just said.
No, but you're playing loose with the numbers there and I take exception with your accusations.
You weren't here at the time. You don't know what happened.
We discussed this.
Your time's up. Time's up, Tom. Have a seat. Thank you. Chance, do you care to respond? Anyone else? Kate doesn't want to come up here.
I know we're over time and I appreciate you asking if there was anybody else. I just wanted to let the citizens of Shawnee know that Avidis Foundation has paid for a Mobile Smiles unit, which is dentists who come in in a mobile RV and they're set up to provide dental services to people who don't have dental insurance and who need some dental care. They'll do cleaning, fillings, extractions. And we have the applications for those services at the senior center. This will take place next week, beginning on Monday and go through Friday. We can take at least ten appointments a day. And we have Wednesday almost full and Thursday and Friday have appointments on there. So there's probably fifteen appointments left to be taken. So since tonight was a night that was gonna be televised, I wanted to let all the citizens that were out there know that we have this service available through Avidis. And next month, the Mobile Smiles bus will be back and they will be at the community market. So there'll be another 50 appointments for people who can't make it to this event to make it to the next event. And the Shawnee Senior Center is open eight to five, Monday through Friday. And we'd be happy to help out with getting anybody who wants to be registered all taken care of.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have the blue jeans.
Aw, man. You were there. We had so much fun. Did you ride the bull?
Oh, man.
It's not the riding that's the problem.
It had a real slippery saddle.
If they murdered, they were slipping.
We had a great time. It was an excellent fundraiser. And I hope those of you who didn't have an opportunity to attend can attend next year because you missed a good party this year. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, item four. Presentation by RDG SWB, Inc. to provide an update to the city's comprehensive plan.
Good evening. At the end of 2017, the city of Shawnee went out for a request for proposals to create a new comprehensive plan, which is well overdue. And as part of that, based upon qualifications, RDG Consulting was accepted based on their qualifications. And through the last year, there has been several community interest groups. Several of the members here tonight are part of those where they've went out into the community, asked what people wanted to see on the comprehensive plan and made sure to have that included. We're about twelve, step twelve out of fifteen. You know, those could change depending on how many community events they hold. So we're pretty far into the process and it's been requested that RDG come tonight and make a short presentation and put you up to speed on where we're on the comprehensive plan. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Ms. Amy Hozzi.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, mayor and commissioners, for having us here tonight and for allowing us to participate in this process with the residents of Shawnee. It's been a great... We actually kind of officially kicked off, I think we did a Blue Zone event kind of the end of March. We were in the April-May timeframe. So it's been a great few months and we've learned a lot about the community. And we've really appreciated the participation, interaction we've been able to have with community members over the last year or so. There we go. Okay. Make sure I'm using... I'm gonna keep this pretty high-level overview. If you have more specific questions, very happy to answer. It will be over a hundred and some pages. The committee has already has about a hundred and some pages in their hands reviewing. So I didn't want to get too into the weeds. They told me to keep it under 45 minutes. So, just kidding. I always know that the faster I am, the more popular I am. So I wanted to just give you a good, high-level overview tonight and talk a little bit about the plan. Talk about the process first that we went through. Throughout the whole entire process, we have, we've been trying to reach out and have community engagement efforts. It was, it's very heavy kind of front-end and then we take a lot of that information, continue to work with our committee and begin to generate the document. But we have onsite events and we have a website where people can go and see every presentation that we've done. We have online surveys, lots of opportunities for people to interact in ways and at times that were comfortable and appropriate for them. At the same time, we were also looking at kind of where we are today. Because I always joke, it's my background as a history teacher that I always say, you have to understand, to understand where you're going, you gotta understand where you've been. So we did a pretty deep dive on that piece of it. Combining those two together, we begin to then look forward to where do we need to go, especially around the land use piece, beginning with some concepting workshops, working those out, and then going into some very detailed drawings as we moved forward. A lot of times that begins to come together in the plan elements, which I'm gonna talk about in a little bit more detail here, and the goals, specific goals that we identify within each of those plan elements. But pulling that all together then into the final document. As I mentioned, we started out, I want to just kind of go over the different components of the document. It will be about ten chapters in all when we're all said and done. And it starts off with that piece about where we are today and the number crunching. I didn't expect you to be able to read these. Again, I don't want to, I could get into the weeds on charts for quite a while and I didn't think you'd appreciate that. At the same time, we were holding some community events. We had some great events around the city. Held them at Blue Zone, at the neighborhood groups. It was, it was really good interaction with a number of people coming out. Interestingly enough, for whatever reason, we actually usually had more people coming out at our day events than our evening events, which is kind of different from a lot of communities that we go to. But still really good attendance at a lot of those events. Those things that we heard at those events and at, through our online survey, some of the issues, challenges, and opportunities we heard about from people were things related to community image, community health, downtown, vacancies in the downtown, homelessness in the downtown, neighborhood appearance and quality. But also then some great opportunities with the lakes and St. Gregory and just this overall energy. I will also say, it's kind of hard to put into words. But there was a sense of overall energy and optimism, I would say, in the community right now that we're really moving forward and getting some great things done. And this is the time to really jump on that opportunity. Community health being one of the things that we heard a lot about, which we were excited to hear from residents. And we like to break it down into a full chair. Sometimes you hear the analogy of a three-legged stool. We want a full chair with all four legs. And so we first frame it as a community, a healthy community is economically healthy. So we have vibrant businesses. We have a strong core. We have competitive wages, all of those things making a healthy community. Environmental health, that the decisions we're making, especially around land use, will ensure people's private investments that they make within our community. Civic health. Civic health is really important in any city that we need to continue to engage residents. They need to feel pride and excitement in their community. And we need to be fostering the next generation of city commissioners in our community, too. Individual health also, which I think we've been hearing a lot about, which has been great through the Blue Zone initiatives and so forth. So creating opportunities for healthy lifestyle that come out of just routine and not something I have to schedule into my day and minimizing hazards and maximizing safety within the plan. So we hope that these things come to life throughout the plan and the pieces that we'll be talking about here. So we break the document down into some plan elements after the core piece is the land use and then there's some core elements that came out of the conversations that we heard from individuals. So I just want to hit on what we have for kind of the overall arching, kind of big goals or big ideas for each one of these plan elements. Underneath each one of these within the document, we have identified strategies and action items that get into much more detail within the plan. And so the committee has been hearing those, has now heard all of those and been reviewing those as we've been moving forward. So beginning with land use, kind of big ideas, big goals. Our growth should be incremental and it should be connected. We shouldn't be jumping and it should be connected. We shouldn't be jumping around. That's a very inefficient way for a city to grow. We need to make sure that new development contributes to the community's character and quality of life, and that when we do develop, that it preserves the environmental features that people really love here in the city, too. Transportation. That our transportation system should be safe and efficient and for all means, pedestrians, cars, bicyclists, people in motorized chairs. I was just heard the news as I was leaving here to come to this meeting today about an incident in Oklahoma City with a gentleman with a motorized wheelchair. Did you see this, too?
Yeah.
And the fire, the fire department had to, drove, one of the firemen drove it back to the nursing home for this gentleman so it wouldn't get left on the side of the road. Making sure that those individuals can easily and safely move around our communities is really important. It's really easy to think about the individuals who are just out there exercising, but it's really about everybody at all ages, from our students to our elderly. Establishing a transportation system that supports desirable development patterns. So good communities, good neighborhoods, good economic development. And finally, that we're creating a community and corridors that elevate the community's image. Our corridors might be the first or sometimes the only experience and impression that a visitor can have of a city. It's our biggest area of private, our public investment, so we need to make sure that it's putting the best image and the best foot forward for our city. That fits well with community image. So we heard a lot about this from residents. We want to make sure that we're continuing to build on the natural environment that we have here, that it's regionally appropriate, well-maintained, that we are identifying partnerships where we can continue to create neighborhoods and commercial areas that are healthy and inviting and functional, that we encourage development of places rather than just subdivisions, as I will describe it sometimes, where people can gather and socialize and have a sense of community. It goes back to that civic piece, the civic health, feeling connected to your community being really important. And then finally, supporting missions and quality of all community organizations, because we have some really great ones here in the city. So places like the, the school district and the downtown organizations. Quality of life. Again, destinations that are friendly, create strong social networks, park facilities that we continue to invest in and build on so that future generations can have as good or better park systems than we have today. Connections between jobs and housing. And then finally, really creating that holistic vision of health that we talked about, having all aspects, economic, social, civic, environmental. The downtown, we heard a lot from, from individuals in the community about the downtown. So we actually spent a whole workshop looking at just the downtown. And what we really heard is there's some really good things happening. There's some really great momentum. What's our next step? What's some of the things that we need to be doing? We really think continuing to improve the visibility of downtown. I was checking into my hotel today and listening to someone describe to the people in front of me how to get to the downtown. So making sure that that's really easy to find and to get them there. They wanted to go antique shopping, if you were wondering. Elevating the downtown also as a regional destination, offering, also offering a lifestyle option. We think one of the key things, the next kind of key step in the downtown is people living in and, in and around the district. So having those eyes on the street twenty-four hours. Having that is just another housing option. We're going to talk about housing here in a second. Multiple housing options within a community also makes for a healthy city. And then overall, making just sure that it's part of our economic strategy. Okay, housing in neighborhoods. Continuing to make sure we have healthy neighborhoods with a range of housing types. We heard a lot of, and this isn't, and this is not uncommon. I hear this from every community I work in right now, housing, housing, housing. How do we address our housing needs, especially as it relates to workforce housing? One of the key pieces to that is providing a wide variety of housing options that we meet everybody's needs at everybody's point in their life. Sometimes I'll refer to it as life cycle housing. So what the housing you need after you've left your parents' home or finished college is maybe different than what you're going to need when you're forty and have a family, as opposed to when you're ready to downsize or you're looking for senior housing. So making sure we have all those options in a market makes for a healthy market and makes sure that people stay here in our community. Conserving our existing housing stock is the best source of affordable housing that we're going to have, so we need to continue and to invest in those homes. And then front, again, trying to find ways to support the private market in mark, in places where it's a little bit riskier or the margins aren't quite as great as, as doing a five, four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Public services, this is the last one. Provide public services in a manner that's balanced and cost-effective for the community, in an efficient manner. Again, making sure we're extending infrastructure where it's appropriate and makes sense, that we're making sure our land use and our transportation are closely tied together and doing it in that cost-effective way, and then expanding emergency services as we grow as a community and making sure all parts of the city are well-served. Our final steps, our next steps, we're pulling the document together. We have sections already drafted that the committee is reviewing, and we'll be pushing those out to the public here in the next couple, actually in the next probably thirty to sixty days. We'll be looking at doing an open house probably in March or so, inviting the public to come in and see the work we've done, and then to comment on the draft. So we're getting really close to the finish line. We've appreciated everybody's help that we've had throughout this process and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Amy? Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Good job. Item five, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 323 South Eden Street from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Medium Density Residential District, case P-1618, applicant Eugene Biller.
Hello. This public hearing is a opportunity for this individual's applicant to rezone a 4.23 piece of property there on Eden Street, just to the east of Farrell. They're wanting to, in the future, possibly split that in several lots and put some duplexes on it. It would be limited, even though it's four acres, it'd be limited. They could only split up to three lots without doing a plat. So the maximum, the number of duplexes or triplexes they could have would be three currently unless they brought it back before the planning commission and city commission. But it would create an opportunity for some growth in that neighborhood. There is adjacent property that is already zoned, R2, and so we as staff feel like this would be a good fit for that area. We recommend approval.
Any questions of Jared? The public hearing is declared open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve it.
Approved by Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Mayor, read the title and then we're gonna brief you.
Why don't you read the title?
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, beginning thirty-three feet west of the northwest corner of Outlot Nine, Spalding's Addition, thence south, three hundred feet, thence west, six hundred feet, thence north, three hundred feet, to a point forty-three feet east of the northeast corner of Outlot Twelve of Spalding's Addition, thence east, six hundred feet to the point of beginning, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Previously described as Outlot Ten, amended plat of Outlots Ten and Eleven of Spalding's Addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Medium Density Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? Now call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item six, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 420 West Federal Street from R1 Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, case P-1818, applicant David Carter.
This piece of property sits between Great Plains Graphics and Christopher Insurance. It's a piece of property that's been historically zoned to R1. However, both properties on each, on each side of it are commercial. They're small individually-owned businesses, and the applicant is asking us to rezone this to C1, to have a small business there as well. C1 is limited to small businesses, office complex. There's a very small handful of items that has that small use designated to it. And so, based upon the neighboring properties, based upon the use of the applicant's requesting, city of Shawnee, planning staff requests that you approve this property.
Is I gonna just use the house that's there or the facility?
That's the intent right now. The, the property would be limited by, based on the size of the structure and the size of the property, on how many parking spaces, it would be limited on what they could use it for. If they were to tear down the structure, the size of the property would still limit it to a very small office-type structure based on parking size requirements.
Any other questions? Let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, Rose Garden Block Forty-two, lots twenty-one to twenty-three in the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification R1 Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 806 East Grant Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District with conditional use permit, case number P-1918, applicant Crafton Toll and Associates.
This is what we feel is a very excellent, a very great opportunity for the city of Shawnee. Currently here is the CTSA daycare facility, and they are proposing, and I think you have a preliminary drawing of it in your packet, to remove some of the old existing structures on the south portion of their lot and to rebuild a nice daycare facility with a lot of new parking, a lot of new landscaping. It's going to look very nice for the neighborhood. And as part of that, a daycare facility is required to have a conditional use permit in C1. They are already currently zoned C1, but to conform with the code, we ask them to go ahead and apply for the conditional use permit to bring them in conformance with the code. We felt like this would be a better fit and to rezone them to C3, which would allow it by right. It would confine the use, as we spoke about, conditionally, C1 to these types of lower-use facilities. It will be a tremendous benefit, we feel, to the neighborhood there with the improvement they have in the new structure, the finances that they're going to be put into it. I feel like it's going to be a really boost to that area. The city of Shawnee planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mark, some of these just temporary buildings start with when they started out.
Right. That's absolutely right. And some of the old houses that have been retrofitted for, just to make do with for the time being. And they, if you haven't drove by there, they have removed all those, and it's going to be a very nice piece of land.
Any other questions of Jared? Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Harrod moved to approve.
Second.
Seconded by, what, Commissioner Bolt? Is that right? Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, an ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described real property within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, lots one, two, three, four, five, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, block forty-nine, Beverly Hills Addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, an attractive land described as beginning one-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-five-feet west and fifty-feet north of the southeast corner of block four, Yates Addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof. Thence west, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-five-feet, thence north, ninety-five foot three feet, thence east, one-seventy-one-point-five-feet, thence south, ninety-five-point-three-feet. To the point of beginning, an attractive land described as beginning twenty-five feet east of the southwest corner of block four, Yates Addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the report, recorded plat thereof, thence north, fifty feet, thence east, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-feet, thence south, fifty feet, thence west, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-feet, to the point of beginning in the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. That was a mouthful. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 3 Burleson Road from A1 Rural Agricultural to A1 Rural Agricultural with conditional use permit, case P-2018, applicant Kevin Dreschel, Dreschel?
Yes. This is a application for a piece of agricultural property, it's five acres. A gentleman would like to put a manufactured home on it. It is consistent with the neighbor, surrounding neighborhood property. There's been a couple other within the surrounding quarter of a mile that has done the same thing. Our agricultural zoning code does allow for manufactured homes with a conditional use permit if the lot is over five acres. And based upon the neighborhood, based upon the history that we have and the times that we've done this in proceeding, the city of Shawnee planning staff does recommend approval.
Any questions of Jared?
Wasn't there a trade already on this lot several years ago?
It has been removed several years ago. It's currently a vacant lot.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Sehorn. Read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, beginning at the northwest corner of the northeast quarter of section twenty-one, Township Ten, north range east to, range to east of the Indian Meridian, thence south, south, four-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six-nine-feet, thence east, four-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six-nine-feet, thence north, four-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six-nine-feet, thence west, four-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six-nine-feet. To the point of beginning, containing five acres, more or less situated in the northwest corner of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty-one, Township Ten, north, range to east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification A1 Rural Agricultural District to A1 Rural Agricultural District with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item nine, discussion and consideration of an ordinance creating a Parks and Recreation Committee, which was deferred from the January fourteenth meeting. Thank you, James.
Good evening. In front of you is the ordinance. As we reworked it, it now states that there will be four members and one city commissioner. Each member would serve a three-year term. As historic presidents, all members would reside within the city limits. All the recommendations from that committee will come back to the city commission for final approval, and there will be an annual report brought to you each year. Like I say, as, as historic presidents, this is kind of the way we made this up. You're welcome to form it in any way you want. Staff supports it the way it is. But like I say, it's, it's up to how y'all will make this up, and we can, we can bring a final approval back to you. The staff feels that the, the committee would help make recommendations and decisions centered on what decisions Shawnee have and expect to see. And as you know, we have a Parks master plan and have done a survey. They would have all that to, to work off of, just to, to help staff make them decisions. So.
Questions of James?
Did the first draft not say live or work?
I think it did. That was gonna be my comment.
As in, the only committee that we've ever changed members living into the, the city limits or living outside was the beautification committee. It's the only committee set up that way. And just from historical perspective, we went ahead and went back to living in, all, all members living in the city limits. Now, that's, if y'all wanted to, to continue on with the way we set up the beautification committee, you're, you have that right to do that. But historically...
Beautification committee is a combination of the city and chambers Shawnee forward committees, so that's one that we changed.
Yes.
Does our charter require committee members to live in the city?
Charter cited on this issue, sir.
I feel pretty strongly that we need to, need to be a little more inclusive than requiring the people to live in Shawnee. What's the pleasure of the other commissioners?
To require them to live in or live?
I don't think we should require them to live in the city. I think that they, they live here, work here, come here.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
That's why I've been saying the city limits for years and couldn't help with anything. The wording on the original one that we saw in January, I thought was good wording. Way it included, I mean, in the city limits or must work, or I don't remember the exact word there.
It's our own property.
Yeah, it made sure you'd have interest here.
It was the same language as the beautification committee.
Would you like to make a motion to adopt, to use the same language as the beautification committee, or simply defer this to the next meeting?
Which would be, we can make that change currently without having to look at it again, can't we?
That's correct.
I'd move we use the language that was used on the beautification committee.
Sir, just to make sure it's clear for the record, the motion is to approve the ordinance as authored with amendment by interlineation regarding the residency requirement.
Yes.
What he said, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bolt. Is there any further discussion? Read the title.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21 Parks and Recreation City Code of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by adding a section that creates a Parks and Recreation Committee and regulates the same, and providing for codification, repealer, and severability.
Call of question. Motion carries seven zero. Item 10, consider an appointment of a city commissioner to the Parks and Rec Committee that we just created. If any of the commissioners have an interest in serving on that, would you please contact me, and we'll make an appointment? I don't have to make an appointment at this meeting, do I, Joe?
No, there's no requirement, you can or you can wait.
If anyone has any interest?
I kind of stirred this up, so if you cuss differently, you don't have to say that I did, but if someone else.
Anyone else have any interest?
But I would gladly do it. Congratulations.
I think Commissioner Bolt would do a great job on that committee.
I'd be happy to do it.
Do we require a motion, or is this simply an appointment?
Gosh, I apologize. I believe it's just a mayoral appointment, but I believe it'd be a ratification. So if you did it in the form of a motion, that would serve as a ratification, otherwise we can.
I appoint Commissioner Bolt as their motion to ratification. Commissioner Herod moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call of question. We don't know what we're doing.
It didn't take long to get him under the bus.
Motion carries seven zero. Item 11, discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, pertaining to plan design pertaining to vesting, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. As y'all are aware, the city offers a defined contribution plan as a benefit to the employees of the city of Shawnee. All new employees are required to participate in the plan, and then many of the long-term employees also participate that aren't participating in our pension plan. This, what we're doing with this ordinance would add two things to the plan. It would add a variable funding mechanism, where in the event that the budget allowed, we could offer incentives or reward our employees by the city contributing an additional percentage as an employer contribution on their behalf to their account. And really, the thought behind that is, what makes it attractive is we don't have to pay FICA, Medicare taxes, and things like that on behalf of the employees, and it's not a permanent increase to the city's budget as far as new salaries or additional salaries that are currently being paid. So this would be a one-time benefit in the event you guys wanted to do that. The other change to the plan is to change our vesting. Currently, the employer's contributions to the plan on the employee's behalf is, takes seven years for them to have access to those funds should they leave. It has to be forfeited back to the plan. This would change the vesting from a seven-year to a five-year vesting, and it would tier the vesting, so each year they would have 20% of their funding, of our employer's funding to their employees' accounts, be vested onto their account. So 20% year one, 40% year two, and so forth, until the fifth year where they have full access to the funds.
How much discretion do we have on the match?
On the match? It would be set.
By what?
By an ordinance, which would be, by plan design, it would be fixed.
Cannot we adopt a matching, a discretionary matching formula whereby we could by resolution determine the match percent?
You could.
On a year-by-year basis?
You could. And it would be budgeted, it's not required. The way the plan document would read is, should you budget for it, you can make the decision to add a discretionary funding.
So the way it's written, we're not tying future commissions to
Correct.
mandatory matching contributions.
Correct, correct.
So each commission, when they did their budget, they would have the discretion to determine.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, the vesting would be set. The vesting would be.
The vesting I get is five-year graduated, which is more in line with what
It's industry standard.
Commercial businesses do. Are there other questions?
This puts us in both a competitive and a equitable situation as far as that across the board.
It's more attractive to future employment opportunities for the city to hire.
So if a person leaves the employment, and within that five years, they just retain their contribution, they don't retain the cities, do they?
That's correct. So say they left in year
They get their vested share
They would get their vested share.
Of the cities and earnings plus.
So if they left in year two, they would get 40%.
Gets similar to what we see in our industry.
And they always get their contributions that come out of their paycheck, they'll always receive those back.
We examined several other communities, both within and without Oklahoma, as well as industry standards, and found that we were, our golden handcuff was a little bit more of a prison sentence. And we want to also send a signal to the employees that we care about, examine and consider their personal well-being financially. This was one of the largest items that was identified to me in my meetings with the employees, was access to those funds. Seven years, we're unique in that regard. We're two years ahead of almost every one of our peer cities.
Other questions? Comments? Is there a motion? Commissioner Bolt moved, made a motion. Gillum, second.
Mr. Bolt, Commissioner Bolt's commission, take the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, pertaining to plan design pertaining to vesting, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency.
Call of question. Motion carries six ayes, one nay. Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause? Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call of question. Motion carries six ayes, one nay. Consider bids lease of Shawnee, city of Shawnee property located at the northeast corner of Leo and West Tech Road, Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purposes of pasture open fling.
Mayor, commissioners, this is an every-three-year lease that we, actually, it's a yearly lease that we lease out with the option to renew for two more years. The property formerly known as the regional park property out on Leo and West Tech. We leased this out for grazing, and it was time due again to lease this back, or bid this back out for lease, so we did that. We advertised in the newspaper and received one bid back from Dave Stockry for the amount of $5,000 a year to lease that property. He is the current leasing out there and has been since we started leasing this, so it's staff's recommendation, if y'all want to, to continue the lease with, go ahead and accept it and continue the lease with Dave Stockry.
Any questions of James? Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Herod. Call of question. Motion carries seven zero. Administrative report, Mr. Allison.
Commissioners, good evening. I wanted to, we haven't done one of these yet, and I wanted to present a mid-year budget update. So what we're comparing is, is the time period from July through December, fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 18. You have the figures in front of you, and then they're on the screen here to my left. One of the things that I want to point out is, from July to December, we have a positive net revenue. This is citywide, so this includes government, governmental activities, our general fund, all the supporting funds, and it also includes business-type activities at the airport and the municipal authority. And then, of course, you can see where we were last year. We had a negative net income, if you want to call it that, about 2.8 million. The biggest swing in this is due to, we've had increased sales taxes this year. We've also had increases in utility revenues over the previous period, and capital spending has been reduced from July through December. We've done this through managing our budget, just comparing cash flow to expenditures and the needs of the city. And one of the things I want to point out in this, this is through December, so some of the big decisions we've made as far as increasing utility revenues and some of the new funding features that we've added on the SMA, those go into effect really this month and next month, so this doesn't capture that. Additionally, incentivized retirement that we did, we don't see the effects, and not yet we'll see those in the coming months. So this is very, very good news for the community. It's a good swing.
It's good to get a little good news, isn't it?
Questions, Chance?
You guys have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'd like to point out that we ask our department ed and employees to help us close this budget. You see that almost two and a half million dollars in increased sufficiency or reduced expenditures. Clearly, they all held a hand in that, and one of the, one of the returns on that investment of our employees was the item that you just previously approved. They, in my mind, they go hand in hand, and I appreciate very much the council's action.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Chance. That's, you got good news, and I can read this.
Is there any new business? Commissioners' comments?
I don't think I have anything to say.
We're still one and two then in the count? We want to start at six and work our way back?
No, go ahead. I'm just happy with what Chance reported, that's it.
That's a huge deal.
Yeah, great news, and yeah, that's pretty exciting. Yes.
I would like to reiterate that I appreciate the staff trying to help us get our surplus back up and cutting back on the expenses, so that really is going to be helpful going down the road. Also, we talked about everything going on this weekend. We had the gun show out at the expo, and we had the, I call it Central District, they call it Central Area Livestock Show. I don't know how many, there's over 300 head of sheep, 800 overhead, 800 head of pigs shown out there Wednesday through Saturday. They finished up about 7 o'clock, 6:30, 7 o'clock on Saturday night, so we had lots of people in town for all those events, so. And if you didn't make it out to the gun show or the livestock show, you missed the opportunity. I guess I didn't realize about the bike deal going on, so I'm not a bicycle enthusiast, so I don't ride them inside or outside.
You don't ride them on gravel roads either, do you?
I don't ride them on gravel road or on pavement either one.
Commissioner, there is an auction tonight, a premium sale at the livestock show, correct?
Yes, it's always on the commission meeting night. I fuss about that all the time, because when I was in business, I used to send money out there, but since I'm not in business anymore, so I don't do that.
Yeah, that is going on as we speak. It's going on as we speak.
Yeah, as we speak.
My turn.
Your turn.
I clarify my comment about good news. We get a lot of good news in this town, quite honestly, but a little, sales tax is a little bit special, okay? I have kind of an interesting thing, talking about being on a panel for the Youth Speaks. I had an opportunity to do this, I think it's about 1998, in my previous term in the commission, so I wondered what the difference in attitude between what they were telling us then, the questions they were asking then, relative to what they're saying, the questions they would be asking now. We've had a few changes in the last 10, 12, 15 years, and it's going to be interesting because the pressures and everything that are on there are much more immediate. Everything is much more immediate than it was then. I wondered to what degree this will be brought out, but the pressures are now relative to what they were then. We all had those things when we were young, but they didn't have the pressure and immediacy and the opportunity to create problems that they have in this day and age. So I look forward to what they're going to bring up, and certainly even more so to the solutions they may bring up. And with that, I read the rest of my time to Mr. Ward.
Yeah, you know, it was a busy weekend here in town. I was at the, BSI had a tourism meeting out at the expo Friday, and the event that Chance was talking about was out there, and I think I had to park almost down at Tecumseh to walk up to the building. I mean, it was, it was a full house out there, and I know the gravel growler was a phenomenal event, and I bet he really does get 500 people here next year for that. I mean, he's got the connections to do that, and I think that'll turn into a very significant event for our community. Chance, I want to thank you for all your hard work and all the city staff. I mean, obviously, you didn't do that by yourself, but I mean, you know, a lot of good news, and we really appreciate that. I know that took a lot of hard work and some sacrifice and some stuff that wasn't fun, but we're reaping the benefits of that now. And there are a lot of good things going on here, so I'm very enthusiastic about what's going on in our community. Thank you.
I take strong exception to Tom Claybrook's comments and his demeanor and his tone. His law degree came from the same place mine did, so that's a nice way of saying he doesn't know any normal about what he's talking about than I do. That having been said, he did ask a simple question, but as any of you who are in business know, simple questions don't yield simple answers. When I went to Chance with Tom's questions, it was dig to the bottom of it and see what's there systemic, that why we don't know on a more concurrent basis where we are, and Chance has taken steps to remedy those things, and the information which we are now getting is better than what we've gotten in the past. I'm not saying that we didn't stub our toe, and that we shouldn't have known. Some of us were asking questions, and we weren't getting good answers to it. Now, as to Tom's comments about what's legal and not legal, it is my understanding that these bond issues balance over, or their sales tax issues balance over time. You don't look at any point in time and say, where are we? You measure these things so that it's common to use funds from another fund, and I resent very much the fact that Tom implies that we're misappropriating or stealing, because that is simply not the case, and we're not allowed to respond to those comments at the time that he's made, so that's my two cents word. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport and Airport. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Herod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call of question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No.
Seeing none, we don't have, we go to Shawnee Municipal Authority, by municipal. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Seconded by Commissioner Sehorn. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we are adjourned, go to the livestock show of 2017.
Thank you.